Okay, there we go. All right, hello, everybody. Thank you for joining us. Let me just get my act together here. And I need to read the opening statement that takes five to 10 minutes. Sorry, I'm normally more organized than this. There we go. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. As Chair of the Maynard School Committee, I need to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mary Branley. Jessica Clark.
Yes.
Beth Lynn Houlihan.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy. Yes. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Colleen Andrade.
Yes.
Jeff Ferranti. Was he coming tonight?
Yeah, he's on. I see him. Yep, he's muted.
Oh, there he is. Now you can ask him again.
Yes.
Alrighty, Jennifer Gaudette.
Muted.
Down there. Well, there's Jeff. Now we can find Jennifer.
She's here, but she's muted. So, there you go.
I'm here. Yes. What am I supposed to do? Yes, I'm here. All right. Ryan Haas.
Yes.
All right, Rob Rulu. Or is it Rulo?
Rulo. He'll answer either, I think.
It's Rulo. Rob. You.
Hey, he might not be here.
Oh, really? I'm looking.
You're singing his name and he hasn't answered, so.
I don't think he's here.
I don't see him on the list.
I don't either.
Yeah. All right, Wayne White.
Wayne is here, but muted.
Hello, I'm here.
Hello, all right. And anticipated speakers on the agenda, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Brian Bolo. Bolo, below, oh. How do you say your name?
Bullier. And yes, I am here.
Bullier?
Bullier, yeah. Bull you, bull you, whatever. It all works.
French.
Very French.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll have to practice that. Good evening. This open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's orders dispense the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature a citizens' comment period. For this meeting, the Maynard School Committee is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the town's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. And please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Additionally, please let the chair know if you were recording or broadcasting this meeting prior to doing so. Please indicate in the meeting chat now, or no, actually, in the participant. Is your hand plan to record or broadcast this meeting? I am looking through. There are 45 of us tonight, 46. I don't see any raised hands, so I'm going to assume that no one is recording or broadcasting. All right. Most of the supporting materials that have been provided for the members of this body are available on the Maynard Public Schools District website under School Committee, Agendas, SC Agenda 2020-21. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Meeting ground rules. Before we go to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for the effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, the chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold off speaking until your name is called and remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, including colloquy with other members, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Citizens' comments. Any citizen wishing to make a comment to be read during a virtual meeting and entered into the public record may do so by emailing comments to comments4, numeral four, scmeeting@maynardk12, maynard.k12.ma.us. And it's all, there are no spaces. So comments4scmeeting. Comments need to be emailed in advance and will be received up until the citizens' comments agenda item is addressed. Your email must include your first and last name and home address in order for it to be read. Emails without names and/or addresses cannot be read. Comments are limited to three minutes or 350 words to ensure that everyone who wishes to has the opportunity to be heard. To ensure that your statement is read in its entirety, it is suggested that you limit it to approximately 350 words. Statements longer than 350 words may be cut short at the three-minute mark in the interest of time, but will be submitted for public record regardless. The chair will read only one statement from each citizen. However, citizens can submit any additional comments for the public record by providing a copy to the chair via email up until the end of the meeting, specifically stating their desire to have these additional comments included. Please be aware that the citizens' comments agenda item is devoted time for the school committee to hear from the citizenry. As such, its structure primarily supports unidirectional public recording of citizens' comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. Okay, so I will bring, call the meeting to order, roll call vote. Jessica Clark, here. Mary Branley.
Here.
Natasha Rivera.
Here.
Beth Lynn Houlihan.
Here.
Lydia Clancy, here. All right, here we go. First order of business is meeting minutes. Without objection, I would like to accept and approve the Maynard School Committee's meeting minutes of 8:20 and 8:24. Are there any objections or any edits that need to be noted?
The only edit that I had was that Brian Haas's name is missing an R on the 20th.
Harsh.
No, it's V-I-A-N. We want them to be spelled correctly.
Right, yep. Anyone else?
I just have a grammatical thing on the 8:20. No, sorry. Yeah, yeah, minutes. It's, what page is this? Two, the second page, under, there's a roll call vote, and then it has, the district is working on having that PD that meets teachers' needs. The sentence just doesn't quite make sense on having PD that meets teachers' needs, is I think what it's supposed to say. So it's just a grammatical error that might be a little confusing to folks that they're trying to read.
I can't even find it. It's on the second page. Where?
The next little paragraph.
Underneath roll call vote, motion passed, five to zero. It's the first roll call vote on that page. It says the district is working on having.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Was working on having PD that met teachers' needs and was in line with it. Okay. So are you thinking it should be teachers with an apostrophe, like?
So the district was working on having, strike that, PD capital.
Okay.
And I'm gonna, I'm guessing that met or meets teachers' needs.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it. I think that makes sense. So then I would say the district was working on having PD that meets teachers' needs and was in line with what they would like to see, as well as PD for parents and students.
Okay.
That sounds like it makes sense, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Got it. All right. So, without any objection, can we accept and approve these minutes with the two edits noted? All right, do I do a roll call? I can't, I don't think so.
When it's without objection.
Yay. Um. Other side. Next, we have approval of warrants. So we recently learned in our workshop that we are supposed to be voting to approve all financial warrants at every meeting. So rather than go back through time and approve all of them, we're just going to do one vote to approve all warrants up to this point for FY21. So for July, August, and now September, I'll accept a motion to approve all of the warrants that we have signed off on. Do I have to name them my number?
I think you, I was just going back to my notes and I wanna say, I think Dorothy said you had to note each of, which is pretty fine. If you go back to the last email Eliza sent, we have all the warrant numbers at the bottom. I was just, just looking at the same thing when you were, I was like, I think she worded in a way that we just, we do have to.
I think we do too. Okay. So then. I will.
Let me pull it up. I think we're up to 20, 21, oh, 12. So from 21, oh, oh, is it just 01?
Oh, it starts at 00?
I don't know. I'm just looking to see. No, I think it just starts at 01. Yeah. So 21-001 through 21-012.
All right.
I'm seeing some from like 20, oh, 20-071?
Yeah, that's FY20. And we're, we're just gonna do FY21 because that's, you know, those are the only ones that this body has approved.
Okay, sorry. Thank you for clarifying.
No worries. All right, so I will accept the motion.
Oh, I think Natasha just made it.
Second. Okay.
Okay, you want me to make it like official wording motion or?
Yeah. Official wording so that it's easier for your notes.
I will make a motion that we accept the approved warrants for FY21. Warrant numbers 21-001 through 21-012.
Okay, and Mary, you second?
Yep.
All right, roll call vote. Mary Branley.
Yes.
Jessica Clark.
Yes.
Beth Lynn Houlihan.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy. Yes. All right, excellent. Now. What did I do with it? Why do I keep losing my agenda? Um, on to citizens' comments. And we have several. I don't know if any new ones have come in. I think the last one was about an hour ago. And so, all right, here we go. From Susan Dunton. Uh-oh. I don't have an address. And I should know her address, but I don't. Okay, Susan, if you're out there and listening, please send me your address because I don't have a street address for you and I can't read your comment without it. So we will go to the next one. Stacy Briggs, 14 Roosevelt Street. Dear Superintendent Haas and Maynard School Committee, I'm writing to request that you allow our students to play soccer and other sports this fall as recommended by the MIAA. The mental and physical health of our students are closely tied together and we know that playing organized sports promotes healthy living and improves both mental and physical health. Here are a few reasons why I think they should be allowed to play. One, they are asked to start the school year remotely and attend classes by sitting in front of a screen at home. Increasing their screen time will be detrimental without organized physical activity such as school sports. Number two, sports are an extracurricular activity and no one is therefore required to play. I'm asking that you please give the parents the option of letting their children, athlete, participate if they wish. Number three, the lessons learned in team and individual competition representing their school cannot be taught. It can only be experienced. These lessons and experiences are carried with them for the rest of their lives. Canceling high school sports will come at a significant cost. The social and emotional well-being of our student athletes. I think it's to the social and emotional well-being of our athletes. We need to return to sports this fall. Our children have given up a lot already this year. Let's try to give them something they can look forward to. Thank you. Stacy Briggs. Julie Quattramini, 44 Boskie Ave. When will GM kids get their teacher assignments? Also, when will we get a schedule of our kids' days? We are less than two weeks away from the start of school with no information. Thanks, Julie. Brian Sanders, 172 Summer Street. My question is, do we have a timeframe when the kids in Green Meadow will know who their teachers will be? School starts in 13 days. Second question is about the remote cohorts in Fowler. Why does one have 13 kids and the other has four? I thought Spanish immersion was mixed back in with general population starting in sixth grade, especially since there is no French. They are all taking Spanish. So I feel that the kids in the bigger cohort are at a disadvantage. I know that I will probably get blowback for asking that. Jim Hines, Levin Tobin Drive. Hello, I am a parent of a fall soccer player. I am asking the school committee to give their approval to allow fall sports. I believe players, parents, and coaches should be allowed to make the personal decision as to whether they are okay to play or coach this coming season. I'm confident and hopeful that the players will take the precautions seriously and will not take for granted this gift of being able to do something normal in such abnormal times for these teenagers. I also believe in the creativity and resourcefulness of the Maynard community. Should there be needs beyond the school in terms of transportation, expenses, et cetera, that will allow the sports to go on as planned with the modified guidelines and precautions? Thank you for all you do in your consideration. Carolyn Norris. Um.
Doesn't have an address.
She.
I haven't seen an address.
There is no address.
And the subject line didn't say to read, but I don't know if she sent it. Yeah.
All right, well, Carolyn, if you're out there and you want me to read this out loud, please send me your address so that I can read it. That's all I have. Were there any that I missed, Colleen?
Lydia, and also just if someone sends you their address, just make sure they make clear they do want you to read it too. I just, yeah, I know it's, it seems like a formality, but it's just really important for us because there, we have had issues before in the other direction where someone really didn't want it read. So we just wanted to make sure it's really explicit and clear.
Yeah, it's hard to tell in the remote when you're getting it electronically.
Yeah. All right. I'm not seeing anything.
Oh, I went quickly through it too and I didn't see any further down.
Hmm, you didn't see any?
No, I went down a couple of days and I haven't seen, didn't see anything else.
Yeah. Okay. So, um. I'm going to proceed to the next item of business because I'm not hearing from anyone and I think we're good. So I cede the floor to Brian. Superintendent's report.
Super glad to be here. Good evening, everybody. Let's talk a little bit about opening of schools with teachers that we began on Monday. It was a great day. It was virtual, unfortunately, but it was still a great day. And one of the themes that we talked about on that day is sort of an old theme. It's been around a long time and it is equally important back when it came out a long years ago as it is this year. And that philosophy coming from really John Saffir and Research for Better Teaching. So that probably rings a bell to some of the participants, if you will. But the message being, what we're doing is really important. We can do it and I won't give up on you. And that message sort of started when we were talking about students back in the, I want to say, the early 90s. But it worked really well for this year because it's been what we anticipate to be a super challenging year. And we have been working really hard to make it not challenging. And we're going to address a bunch of the questions tonight that came up in the citizens' comments in terms of scheduling and things like that. But that was one of the big messages from opening day. A quick update on Green Meadow, the roof anyway, for sure. We are about 98% done with the roof. When I say we, that would be the contractors. They have a punch list of two things left. The wing is actually fully open and the custodians are working hard to reset that wing and clean that wing. I was there today and it's about half done, I would say. And the half that's done is looking really good. You can certainly see the difference in floors in schools when, once they are stripped and waxed and when they're not. And just so you know, our custodians take that very seriously. They actually were redoing the front section because they did it already once and said, you know, it just doesn't look right. So they take pride in their work and that was nice to see. And the floors are coming out nice. We have hired a director of building operations who will be with us at our next school committee meeting. I see some cheers there. His name is Tim McDuff. He's got quite an extensive history in terms of experience with school buildings, projects, and facilities. So he will be, actually be starting with us on Tuesday, September 8. So we are all very excited to have him on board. Quick update on the solar project. And I'm really excited to have Mr. McDuff on board because he certainly has to know more about solar projects than I do. Although I am reading these really thick proposals from two companies. So the update would be, we put the RFPs out there with a consultant who handled all that. RFPs, I think is the correct term, came in, bids for these projects, if you will. We've, it's down to two companies that have submitted proposals, Kursage and the other one being?
Sunpower.
Sunpower, a big company. So we have two. Thank you, Mary. And our job right now is to read them and then we're evaluating them. And we actually have, I'm on that committee. There's people from the town. And we also have a former school committee member, Merrill Hogan, as a rep from the school committee to help out. And she's actually been really good because she knows the maps. She helped create some of the maps. She knows the territory, the area, if you will. So our next meeting is on September 16. So that's when we'll start to really go through the evaluation process. And either I or Mr. McDuff, you like that? I'm already handing things over to him. We'll keep you updated.
Is there something about, I know in the border slip-in last night, they talked about like some curriculum aspect tied to the contract, I guess, teaching. About, I don't know if that was.
Providing a STEM program or?
Yes, yes.
When I have more specifics from those proposals, we will share those. But that is, that was in conversation, yes. Let's see, some positive, let's see, there's a little bit more. Let's get to what, let me tell you some, some good and bad. How's that? Given, look at Natasha, looks very nervous, Mr. Rivera.
I'd like to say more good, more good than bad, hopefully?
Definitely more good. We are working with the Boys and Girls Club that, building right across from Alumni Field to see if they can offer some before, during, school, after-school type programming, more during school and after-school, I believe, for some of our teachers and then residents who need childcare for their children while schools are in remote and hybrid learning models. And we're in talks with them in terms of staffing and working collaboratively to have that open by the beginning of October. That's the really good news because we started with that, Ms. Rivera. And because we are really concerned about our space and our safety, the Excel program is currently not running. And that's no reflection on the members, the director, or the program. That's just reflection on safety and us maintaining that we need, we take safety seriously and we're continuing down that path. Our hope is that once the vaccine is out and the numbers for COVID really are non-existent, that that program will be reinstated and fully functioning. But we just didn't know when that was going to happen. So that was my little bit of sad news for the moment, but it's temporary. It is temporary.
Yeah.
Masks, so there will be, and I think it's a policy that we'll be implementing in the near future in terms of masks in schools. Students and staff will be asked to wear masks at school because it's one of the key things that help keep us safe in addition to washing hands. But when we're talking about masks, this conversation came up recently about who doesn't have to wear a mask. And basically, if you're concerned about your child and they have some medically extenuating circumstances and you want to call the doctor to get a note, that's all you really need to do is, and I'm sure they're getting these calls, the pediatricians around the country about having them provide some sort of note that just says so-and-so cannot wear a mask due to the following reasons. There's not a specific state form anybody needs. It can just be from a medical doctor and we will accept that. So I just want to put that out there. I know that's come up a couple of times this week. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, no, actually, it came up because I know, just heard recently, because I know they have some, some students who'll be coming on site. We had, we're not approving, we're waiting for a little bit more feedback on that policy so we can officially approve it. But for kids who are coming back in the high risk, where the policy might not be implemented yet, that, is that something that can just be communicated to them, those particular ones? Because they may not have time to go to there if they have an exemption to, then the, you know, get it quick enough before the 16, if the policy hasn't, might not be finalized yet.
So we can communicate. We'll put out to all families because really, you don't need a physical. You just need to email or call your doctor and they'll probably hit send and send you a form back, send you a letter back. And that's all you need. There's nothing particular, specific, if you will.
Okay, there's no format.
Right, exactly. Indoor air quality testing will be done next week. We use a company called UEC. We've used them in the past. They're a well-known, established company. And they'll be doing indoor air quality tests in each of our three buildings. Pre-K, we are really looking at trying to, assuming all of our numbers come back positive and stay low, we're really looking at the beginning of October, so a few weeks in, instead of six weeks, to see if we can start to bring back those pre-K kids because we really recognize that asking a five-year-old or a four or five-year-old to work in a remote, independent manner is really non-existent. And we know that. We're still, we will start with remote because that's what we have to do. But then we're going to try and front-load those kids as early as possible and see if we can continue to wear masks and if people continue to, because our feeling is if we get through Labor Day, we get through the start of school, that will really be almost a month by the beginning of October. So you'll be hearing more about that, but we're excited about that possibility.
So Brian, originally, we were saying pre-K and K. So would kindergarten be, or are we just going to start with the pre-K?
I think we'll start with pre-K just and watch the numbers because there are actually a significant number of pre-K. Plus, it really increases our numbers in that building because we already have the at-risk kids and the staff. So we just want to be cautious there.
No, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Somebody asked a question about parent professional development. And right before this meeting, I was able to connect with our director of IT, Adam Steiner, who is planning and will put this out. It just didn't go out yet today. Next Wednesday at 7:00 PM to do a Zoom call to do professional development for parents around Google and exactly how that will work. And he will record that as well so we can have it on demand on the website for people. And he will record that as well so we can have it on demand on the website for people to access if they can't make that particular meeting. And we'll send that information out about that. Let's go to probably the most exciting part of all I have to say. Well, because I know people are waiting to hear about athletics and that is really important. But I don't want to steal Brian's thunder. So I am going to say that he is coming on after the chair's report. So I'm not going to say much about sports besides we have heard you, parents, that you would like sports to be part of it. And we recognize that that is an important part of the whole school experience. So he will be explaining where we're at in terms of the MIAA, their recommendations, our recommendations, and how we need to proceed to move forward. Before we get there, let's talk, because this is one of the talks everybody wants, right? Remote schedules. And it's been one heck of a journey to get to remote schedules for pre-K, K, all the way to 12th grade. And what does that look like at the different levels? We will be sending this out as well because I don't expect that we're going to spend hours analyzing all the different slides tonight. Colleen has them and she will share her screen, I hope, so that we can at least see them. Right, Colleen? Maybe? She might have gone home already, I don't know.
Oh, she's right here.
She's here. She's just trying to get her screen here. She's the host, sorry.
She is home.
Yeah, she's already home.
All right, so she's going to blow that, whatever she does, she's a wizard over there. Are you ready to see that?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Colleen. Now if we scroll, that would just be welcome. Schedules, there we go. Remote schedules for 2020. Next slide, please.
There we go.
So preschool, this is still a sample, but it's pretty accurate in terms of just the independent versus the teacher-led. And I think you've seen this before, so. That's a half-day schedule, just to get a sense of how much time and what students and teachers will be doing. And again, we will send this whole file out. We'll put it on the website. We'll share it with you. All right, Colleen, let's roll to the next slide, if you don't mind. So the nice thing about this presentation is every slide is different because the teachers put it together. So it's kind of going to be fun. It gets very colorful in a couple of minutes. But you can see the kindergarten remote schedule and you can see how they start with a morning meeting and there's a break. There's learning and core content. There's small groups that break out, that first big pink box breakout in three sessions. So teachers have really been working hard to try and figure out, how do we do this remote learning in terms of, we can't just put a kid in front of a computer for six hours. So they've been really thoughtful about making sure there's breaks, making sure there's whole class discussion or whole class activity, making sure that there are then smaller breakout sessions. Like in our world, they're breakout sessions and we just go and we talk. In the kindergarten and the elementary, you'll see that those are more managed because the kids are younger, obviously.
Brian, I have a question because I know that the, the feedback, well, the little grid earlier had teacher-led and then there was the, which is the gray and then the red was, could be teacher-led or could be independent.
Yep.
And I wonder if, because if I'm like, if I'm a parent looking at this, I need to know where does my intervention need to be supporting my child, to be helping them potentially logging in. And I wonder if that could be noted next to the area, like parent assistance might be required or especially for the kindergarten, lower grade. I just, it's, it's hard for me to see if I look, if I'm looking at this as a parent, where do I, where can my child kind of be by themselves and where, where do I need to really help guide a little bit further?
Okay, good point. And I think what will ultimately happen next week is when the schedules go home to the specific students and families. They'll have more, more communication, a letter that will really spell it out in detail of when parents should be doing exactly what you said. This was just, I know people have wanted to see, you know, what does the schedule look like? The start time, the end time, how the breaks are established and things like that. But to your point, there will be more information, both from principals and specific teachers. Grade one, so you can see there's some overlap if you start to, after you look at one and then the other. We have a morning announcements and some morning meetings, then learning in the core content and some examples of what that might look like. And then a brain break. Kids are a little bit older now. It's not just a break, but it's a brain break. Wait till you get to high school. Then you get specials, a lunch break. I'm really waiting for the caller for screen and here we are, grade two. I don't even see, I don't even hear laughter on my headphones.
I laugh.
Good. We have morning meetings, foundations, writing, snack, reading. I won't read the whole thing to you, but we will, as I've said repeatedly, share this with all parents so that they can see this. Put it on the website so it's easily accessible. Grade three, starting to look a little more like a traditional schedule, if you will, in terms of how it's built. 8:30 to 2:50, morning meeting, academics during the day, some specials. And then you can see closing circle at the end of the day to really wrap up the day for those students. Nice job, Colleen. Look at you. Now we're moving on to Fowler. She's in a rhythm now. I'll just keep up with her. The grade four remote schedule looks similar, Monday, Tuesday and then Thursday, Friday. And you can really see that, again, we're starting with the morning meeting. That's kind of that social emotional, let's touch base with the kids, make sure they're connected, make sure they're doing okay. Then we get into academics. There's a break in the middle of the day. And then again, you can see there's an afternoon meeting for grade four at the end of the day. Grade five, again, the whole morning meeting on some days and then specials on other days. Academics are sprinkled in there heavily with a lunch and a playtime. You like that playtime? So they came up with that on their own. And again, depending on the day, there's some specials or some academics at the end of the day. Now this is six through eight. What you're looking at in particular is sixth grade, but six, seven and eight follow that same model. That cohort grouping of different academic classes on Monday and Tuesday. And then you can see they have some of the specials on Thursday, Friday. There's a lunch, play, family time in the middle. Then we get to high school. Sorry, no, you keep going, Colleen. You're on a roll. I shouldn't even slow you down. High school, it's a more traditional schedule, but you can just see that when it starts. So they'll basically, the students will follow their schedule. There's a flex block, there's a lunch and a flex block in the middle of the day. And the nice thing about this is, so we're sort of hopeful, if you will, that this fully remote schedule will match up with a hybrid schedule. We don't have to redo it. Kids and parents don't have to relearn a schedule. They'll just be able to transition in if we're lucky. That's what we're planning. And then ultimately to a full in-person schedule. And if we have to go, you know, transition back because things are fluid and we don't know what's going to happen, it will be as least disruptive as possible. So again, the teachers, the administrators, they have worked, they have worked this out over and over and over and really taking everything into consideration and really focused on what's best for the kids. What will, how can we engage with them? How can we make the least amount of transitions for them? How can we include those morning meetings and that social emotional component to academics? Also including the academics and we're going to get to the sports after this. But that is what we have really been focused on for the last week and a half or so, to really nail it down. You know, this is dotting the i's and crossing the t's. So we're excited about that and we will send that out. We will put it on the website. Principals will be open to questions, not tonight, but once you get that next week, they'll be able to answer directly. If you have a specific concern about a grade, you of course know who your direct principal is.
That's going to go out next week to families or?
I think we can get it out tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
I think we can get it out tomorrow.
And then Brian, the other question that's been asked a lot is who, the teacher assignments for the kids? Like who is going to be their teacher? Is that going to go out also?
It will go out next week.
Okay.
I don't want to promise that I can get that out tomorrow. It's leading into a long weekend, but next week, yes, we will get that out.
Okay.
And I can just talk about the specifics related to Green Meadow. And actually I'll use Fowler as an example. We, you know, I've, I've mentioned this before, that this is kind of really like a Rubik's Cube, trying to put all the puzzles together. There needs to be like some Big Bang Theory version of a Rubik's Cube, like they have three level chests because there are so many different Rubik's Cubes we have to put all together. And so one of the, you know, for example, Fowler had their schedule out with their cohorts. We're, we actually need to make some changes within the immersion in grade four and five, where we will be sending a letter to parents for that either tonight or tomorrow. Just letting them know that instead of having the split levels where we have multi-grade level at the same time, we actually need to go back to having an individual grade that teaches both hybrid and remote. And that just simply had to do with the number of parents who had signed up for remote, but were now requesting hybrid, given that we were starting in a remote environment. So there's a lot of moving parts in terms of that piece. And, and that's what we're trying to figure out to the best of our ability. I was working with Mr. Rulo today. He is, he and Kathy Sullivan are just about there. We're, we're checking off a few extra boxes and we hope to have that information out to parents by next week, by Tuesday of next week, for sure.
Thank you. Yes.
Two quick questions. One, will the co-taught classrooms look the same schedule-wise or are they going to look a little bit different? And two, on the high school schedule, I may have just missed, not read it quick enough, but what's that P at the bottom that's 215 to 315?
So I can answer the high school one probably more easily. The P class, the P grade section, class period is an after-school class. So we have chorus and there's something else that meets after-school as well. So that's what that is for anyone who has a class that functions after-school. In terms of the co-teaching, our special education and at-risk team has really been working hard about our kiddos who are coming in. Oh, and there's Mr. Ferrante, so I'm going to call on him in a second. I know, I keep doing this to you, Jeff. But so they've been really working hard to make sure, you know, sort of the at-risk students in who are coming in on the 16th or 17th. And so one of the things that we've been talking a lot about in the last couple of days is what does the co-teaching model look like? And how do we utilize our staff in the way that makes the most sense for those students? And there's probably about four or five different iterations of that that we're, we're tumbling through in terms of that. So Jeff, the question was, is the co-taught class going to, schedule going to look the same? Oh, and I guess the answer to this is yes. The schedule will look the same from the student perspective. The question becomes about for the, the teachers in terms of the numbers of small groups and who they're meeting with. That may be a little bit different. So the question, Jeff, was just about the co-taught classrooms and what will that look like in comparison with the other classrooms, given the schedules that we just showed? I don't know if you have anything to add and you don't have to.
Like he's muted.
Oh, I can mute you. Working on it. There you go.
No, the schedule's going to run the same as far as how we'll group kids and with which teacher. That's, that's the unknown at this point. Because we know which teachers are going to be able to come in and which ones are remote only. And we know which students are going to be coming in and which ones are remote only. So the groupings might be a little different than what would have been expected in a traditional year in those co-teaching classes.
And parents who are, I know, I think this kind of maybe got abruptly the day, but as far as like the delivery of services, if there's questions about that, the team chairs should have all of that information, right? The scheduling for service?
They'll have a lot of that information now. The service providers are still looking at how are they going to group the kids? They're trying to limit their contact amongst a many cohorts. And then, you know, some of the services may be in person and some of that might be remote. So right now, the service providers are looking at the schedules that we have and which kids are coming in and which ones are going to be remote only.
Okay. And that will be finalized maybe next week as well?
Well, it'll need to be finalized before school starts.
Right, okay.
So hopefully by, hopefully by the end of next week would be perfect. Now, I must do, I must do the caveat though, that things may change once we get rolling. We might find that, oh, this model, this approach might work much, much better or this grouping might work much better. So even though we may start with one, one grouping of students with staff, that might be adjusted, you know, as we, as we get going.
And I know that Google is coming out with new functionality too, right? With like breakout rooms and whatnot in, in September. So hopefully that will help facilitate a little bit more opportunities for some of these learning environments as well. Is that right?
Yeah, so actually we can do breakout rooms now. It just means you have to set up a separate meet, which is kind of a pain in the neck. But you can do it. But so this will be something much similar, I think, much closer to Zoom. And again, I think we mentioned this a couple of weeks ago. Adam Steiner, Dr. Steiner, our director of technology had purchased, what's the name of it?
Enterprise?
Enterprise, thank you, license for Google so that we have access to all of those. And we're very excited to be able to use them to make it much more functional in a remote environment.
Brian, I just, I had a question. It was, I didn't know if you guys might be able to answer Brian Sanders' question about up at the Fowler. It says about the remote cohorts at Fowler. Why, why does one have 13 kids and the other has four? Not sure why we even know that at this point.
Not sure why we know that, but there, the sections are not exactly even by any stretch. It just has to do with how many people are remote, how many people are in which classes, I suppose. And I know that the administration and the teachers have worked hard to balance them as best they can. Some, so they're not perfectly even, but they're all within a very reasonable size.
And the P in terms of Fowler, six through 12, well, this is six through 12 in general. Well, six through eight, I guess more specifically. Um, you know, because we have students who are selecting different languages, who are enrolled in different math classes, in order to keep those schedules as whole as possible, which we heard from the community, that was a desire for us to be able to try and do, particularly as it related to advanced math classes. That made some of these decisions in that way.
Would it be helpful that, because I know these are feedback or questions that come through the school committee? I'm guessing these are things that the building principal might be better equipped to answer. I don't know if the school committee emails get forwarded over just so that they can be responded to in that way.
If you want, I mean, if the school committee can, if, I would go through the chair and then she can send them to me and I'll distribute appropriately and send them back, absolutely.
Okay. Are each teacher, is each teacher responsible for their own school supply list? Or could we get those out in advance of teacher assignments?
For Green Meadow specifically?
Yeah.
I believe it's Green specific and I can, I can double check on if we can get that out tomorrow.
Those are out for Fowler.
They're out for Fowler, but not Green Meadow?
Yeah. And then just to say, from what I understand, there's, there's looking at the cohort list right now for Fowler, that there's one that looks like it's, or but it's combined with another cohort. So it's actually more than that. So it's not, there's no cohort that's just for, like in remote environment. They're combined with another for a remote environment. So you'll see.
Right on the schedule, yeah.
Yeah, the same teacher is, is for cohort so that there's, but they, in relation to remotely, they might be a cohort that's just Monday, Tuesday and one that's Thursday, Friday. But when you go to hybrid, but when they're remote, they'll be together.
As I've said to our staff and Brian has said this too, everything is subject to change. So, and Jeff's just said the same thing. We're really going to, you know, this is really a moment where we're going to take stock really weekly to see what's working and what's not working. And I'm not suggesting we're going to change class lists on a weekly basis. But we're really going to try and make sure that whatever we are putting forward in this new educational model is working for our students.
With that being said, what's the most productive means you see for parents to provide feedback into how it's going?
Once it's, once we're in session?
Yes.
I would think they would reach out directly to their classroom teacher, to the child's teacher, first and foremost. That would, if I was a parent, that's what I, I am a parent. That is what I do, is contact the teacher. And if that doesn't seem like I'm getting anywhere, then I would go to the principal.
Okay. I know we had that, that email, that fall opening 2020. So that, that wouldn't be intended for that kind of purpose, right? That was more for feedback and building the plans? Or is that something that, I just, I'm wondering if parents do email that and it'd still be monitored and caught?
It's monitored and we, and, and Dr. Steiner forwards that information out to whomever he feels is most appropriate to answer the question. But I think as Mr. Haas said, if you can contact your child's teacher, that's going to be the most direct way of getting information. And then you're building principles.
Thank you.
All right. Brian, are you all set?
I am. Thank you very much for letting me go on a little bit tonight.
Sure.
Kudos to everybody.
Yes.
I, I just wanted to ask one question. Yeah, I mean, this is ridiculous amount of planning. Like my mind starts to like short circuit when I look at all that you've been dealing with.
It was fun.
But. They need to have like championship, like it's like the D-Rubik's Cube championships that have like school scheduling championships to see who can get it done the fastest. I was wondering to, just a heads up, if you are considering having any potential in-person meetups at the start of the year, I can imagine that you haven't gotten to figure that out per se, but you have. Okay, go. I'd love it if you would say something about that.
So when, we will be putting that out either this week and or early next week, but the high school has orientation for each grade already set for next week. Ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th. I think it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of next week. Fowler has plans for at least transition fourth grade and, if you remember, you should just tell me, eighth grade?
Eighth grade, correct.
Fourth and eighth. They've already got that planned and that information will go out. And Green Meadow, last week, last I'd heard, they were working on activities, including a drive-by for students and parents to meet their respective teachers. They were just aligning the time, that one, you know, to make sure that there was no overlap. So yes, we are actively working on that. And we were about, we're about 80% of the way done with that. And we are pretty excited about that. So I think some of you should come and visit as well. Just wear your mask. No mask, no entrance. And it's outside. Still want to see the mask? Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. We good?
We are.
Alrighty. So now we have Chairperson's Report. So I checked through to see if Rob Rulo was here. I do not see him. I was hoping to, yeah, I was hoping to introduce him tonight. But I guess that will have to wait till next time. For those of you that don't know, Rob is the new principal at Green Meadow. And several parents have been anxiously awaiting to see his face at one of these meetings. So the Select Board met last night. Business of interest to the district was Maynard is the recipient of a Green Communities Competitive Grant Award of $38,533. Of that, $36,638 will go to upgrading the Fowler Schools Transformer. Annalisa Campagnile, who is the new Director of the Boys and Girls Club, she was at the meeting and requested and received $75,000 from the Community Development Block Grant. And that is going to help the Boys and Girls Club be able to open and hopefully provide some services in supporting families and students during at least this initial, you know, remote start. And, and that, she was very grateful for that. And I'm really grateful that the Board of Selectmen, or Select Board approved that, because I think that's going to go a long way to helping Maynard families. And the Select Board unanimously accepted and signed the final special town meeting warrant, which includes the revised FY '21 budget. Article nine, there was no further discussion regarding the district's request for relief of its $265,422 budget cut. So that is still included in the warrant. And and that will be at the special town meeting for a vote. The school committee had a joint meeting with FinCom last week to present COVID-related budget factors and impacts. We discussed how reopening plans could be affected by the $265,422 reduction to the school district's budget. FinCom requested additional supporting financial information, which we will be providing next week. And the Finance Committee will be discussing their recommendation for special town meeting warrant article nine on the 14th of September. DESI announced today that it's going to be launching a public awareness campaign to help, quote, "remind parents, students, and teachers that everyone needs to do their part to keep each other healthy and safe as the school year starts," unquote. For additional information on safely returning to schools, please go to www.doe.mass.edu backslash back to school, all one word, backslash. And they have frequently asked questions and they have other statements from doctors and nurses and, and how to open safely and how need to work on this together, be in on it together. So those are, those are some good resources. Maynard is back in the yellow zone, according to Governor Baker's COVID rate map, COVID rate map. And I just would like to encourage everyone to please wear masks when you're out and social distance to the best of your abilities. I understand that not everyone can wear a mask all the time. But you can stay away from people. No, I'm just kidding. But you can practice social distancing.
Well, they did talk last night at the, about the Board of Health was going, they're gonna have discussions about the Board of Health potentially mandating in Maynard.
Yes. Yeah.
That, that could be coming.
All right, you cut off, I don't know if that's my computer or, or yours. I think it's mine. All right. Now, due to the increase in negativity and conflict on social media, the district will be disabling the commenting function on its Facebook page. If you have feedback that you would like to share with the district, please contact your child's building leadership team or the superintendent. This is something we've been debating for a while, went back and forth on because we feel like people need to have a venue to express their opinion and we don't want to silence anyone. But right now, things have started to deteriorate, deteriorate in terms of appropriate language and, and comments. And so I think we're just, we're gonna avoid that issue altogether by not allowing a venue and, or providing a venue. And so if you do have something that is important that you'd like the district to know about, you can always email any of us. In keeping with the district's pledge to actively educate its students and fight against institutionalized racism, I will be forwarding to the Town Administrator a statement action plan that was released by 19 mayors and town managers, 19 different municipalities in Massachusetts. It's a document that pledges to actively work against racist practices and to work against systemic racism. It lists principles behind the actions in the pledge, and then it has action items. And I'm just going to be forwarding this to Greg to do with what he would like, but it came to my attention, so I would like to bring it to his. And the school committee would like to thank Justin DiMarco for his collaboration and support in getting the necessary work done in each of the school buildings so that we could open safely and on schedule. Justin painstakingly documented everything that was accomplished in order to ensure completion of tasks and financial accountability. We really appreciate his time and dedication in assisting the district during an extremely difficult period. And that is all I have. So now, yes, Mary?
Just goes back to the Annalisa piece with the, the fact that she's going to be working with the schools. And this is Brian and Jen, it's just while I thought of it. She had asked if you could reach out, I guess if, maybe she could be and her staff could be part of that parent professional development workshops. So, because that's what they're going to be doing. So it's just a tickle for you guys. If you could just make sure that you're aware of those, appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Now, what everyone's been waiting for. Brian B. Brian B.
That's what a lot of kids call me, so.
Okay, there we go.
Mr. B.
Mr. B.
All right. So we're here to talk about sports, right? And how it might look in the fall season. So thank you, School Committee. And my opinion on this is that sports is a very integral part of the high school experience for many students and athletes. And the benefits of playing sports is well documented. So it is my opinion that if we as a school can have some sort of athletics to our, given to our students safely, then it's something we should try to do. It won't be easy, but it could be worthwhile. So we can start at the beginning. They put out rules on, they put different sports into different risk levels. Higher risk level sports are like football and basketball, wrestling, where contact between competitors is expected. Moderate risk sports include soccer, field hockey. And then low-risk sports would be golf, tennis, cross-country, where participants have no contact. These risk levels really determine what sports we can play and not play safely. And as of right now in Massachusetts, no high-risk sports can have competitions. And moderate-risk sports must alter their gameplay pretty heavily so that they can have competitions with other teams. So from there, to try to work with this, they created four seasons instead of the typical three seasons that we play sports. They, they have a fall season, which goes from September 18th to the November 20th. You get a winter season, November 30th to February 21st. Then they have what's called a fall two season, which is February 22nd to April 25th. And then a spring, April 26th to July 3rd. For any sport they deem too high-risk to play in this fall or winter, it can be pushed back to that fall two season. So schools can choose to go there if they want with those sports. Sometimes they may be forced to go to that season. It all depends on the school and what, you know, what we decide that we'd like to do. By doing this, those high-risk sports may have the chance to play if the threat of COVID is reduced by that point. But that's something, they make that decision as you come up to the season. MIA made decisions for fall, and they're gonna wait a little bit and then make decisions for winter and, and kind of so on and so forth. So what that means for us is that we could potentially move ahead with soccer, field hockey, golf, and cross-country with modifications. This does leave football out to be pushed back to fall two season for now. To help some of those sports that got pushed to the fall two season, our Midwatch League is allowing some sports to have limited practices in the fall to keep kids active. MIA guidelines state that all coaches can work with all students outside of their seasons. But we felt as a league that that would be putting a lot of stress on students, forced to make decisions between two beloved sports. And it would have been kind of a free-for-all for coaches trying to teach kids all over. So we, the only way we allow that to go by is that any sports that gets from the fall that gets pushed to that fall two season in the early spring, we're allowing them to have some limited practices so that they can kind of continue to be active now with the potential to play in fall two. One kind of disappointing side was we decided as a league and voted to not have middle school sports for the fall. So for this, for this, it means soccer for us. Now, hopefully those kids can find other ways to play soccer or join a, a different sport if they can. Obviously, field hockey and cross-country still accepts kids grade seven and up. So some of those middle school kids could potentially play on one of those other teams. Now, of course, we need to keep them safe. And that's the biggest name of the game here. How can we get these kids out there being active and still actually being safe? And we have different levels. You have a school level, what we need to do, and on a sport-specific level. There's a lot of rules. I don't think, I don't want to quite bore you with all of them, because I've got my message from the league and it's 14 pages long, so probably won't go through all of that. But I'm gonna hit a lot of the biggest things that would be most important for you to hear. So school-level ones would be, we're changing it. So we're not going against the same teams that we normally would in a league. We're creating new pods that are really close to us geographically. So these pods haven't been 100% confirmed because some schools haven't decided if they were, they're still waiting on school committee votes and, you know, their boards to vote. But our schools would be likely Hudson, AMSA, maybe Marlboro, teams like that, ones that we can reach within a half an hour. This will cut down on bus costs and exposure time for kids who are riding on the bus for away games and meets. And we're not allowed to really compete against schools outside of our pod to keep it safer, so you're not exposing other towns or really having a hard time trying to contact, trace them. Away squads will be limited to just 22 athletes. And that's when you fit on a 77-person bus. We're allowed to put 22 athletes according to the rules. Now allow you with another coach or two and the bus driver to get it to 25. I would even kind of push to, because that's kind of a point of contention. A lot of people are worried about those bus trips and how that could spread COVID. I would even suggest to parents that they can take some of their kids to these games that are away, considering how close they are, and really knock down how many kids are on that bus, 10, 15, depends on the situation. But the lower we can get that, the better, the safer it is for everyone. Of course, on the bus, they'll have to wear masks the entire time, put windows down, keep circulation going. We'll have to do athlete health checks before every single practice and game. They'll need to fill out a form that they haven't been sick, they don't have a fever. This also gives us a good names who attended each day. So if someone does get COVID, we'll be able to contact, trace pretty well. They're gonna limit spectators. We're gonna be offering two lanyards to each player to give to the family members to watch a game. They have a limitation of only 50 spectators. So hopefully this will help us manage it, because we'll have to see who has it with their lanyards out. There could be some adjustments there. We're still trying to figure out as a league the best way to do that, but that's what we're proposing right now. No athletes allowed in the school at home. They just can't go inside there. We'll be setting up sanitation stations. So when other teams arrive, they'll be able to, you know, use sanitation the second they arrive and as they leave, safer for them. And we'll also require for our athletes, and pretty much all the athletes, to have, only bring a singular bag in their, they'll have their equipment, personal hand sanitizer, water bottle, that they can't share with anyone else. We'll also have spots where they put their bags farther apart from each other. A lot of kids like to pile their bags in one pile. We'll keep them separate so that there's space between them when they need to go get stuff out of their bag. And of course, as you just talked about, that community level map. If a community goes red on that map, their, their season's over. So if we go red, it ends there. What we didn't finish, we can push back to that fall two season and continue it there with the teams who are left, who are there. Now, there are some schools are pushing all their sports at that point, so there should be some availability to have some sports then. So a good example, we're framing him. So they can't do sports right now. And, and if we go against them, that, once they, they have to notify us in the 24 hours if they have someone who has COVID or if they go red, and we'll obviously take them off our schedule and we do not go against them. I know now it looks like we're new to yellow and Hudson and Marlboro are also yellow. And we're okay to play, but again, if they turn red, it's over. Now for sports specific, won't go into crazy detail here, but you have like soccer. They're changing a lot of the rules of the game to make it safe. There's obviously a lot of incidental contact with soccer. So they're trying to remove that as much as they can. So there's no timeouts. Officials can give yellow cards if athletes on the bench are being too close or being unsafe. Soccer balls will be sprayed or washed down with approved products between each quarter. No head balls. No touching of opponents with their hands on purpose. No throw-ins but kick-ins. These are all ways to keep kids a little bit further apart. So the sport's gonna look a little bit different, but as I said, the goal is to play, you know, that's what we're looking for. Field hockey, big switch, they would be changing it to just a seven-on-seven. That's probably the biggest change there. No bullies. It'll just be alternating possessions. So there's no excuse to have people really close together. Cross-country's already a low-risk sport, so there's less changes there, although they are gonna still stagger their waves in the starting line. Where you'll have eight to 10 runners starting per wave and then having three minutes passed and the next wave go out. That way you don't have, that's the one real risk in cross-country is at that starting line when all these kids are all jammed up together. You move that, it remains pretty safe afterwards. Golf, golf's actually one of the easiest. They'll, they can social distance while they play. There's 10 minutes between each group as they go out. No exchanging of scorecards. So those are the biggest changes there. So my conclusion is with all the rules listed above, I believe we can keep these kids safe and participate in sports. And it will look a lot different than other years. There are no tournaments, no championships, just kids getting on the field and competing and being active. This year is really truly about playing the sport and the love of the competition and winning is participating. And that's what I have here. So what do we have for questions? There we go.
Brian, so will you, I know normally there's a meeting between the, the Athletic Director, coaches, and the kids to talk about, you know, the, the protocol and, and just, you know, being a good, a good player and what the rules are and that. Will there be one, a Zoom, I guess, really stressing to the, the kids how imperative their role is to keep themselves healthy so that everybody stays healthy so you can play these sports?
Absolutely. First, we'll work through the coaches a lot there. I'm gonna have a Zoom meeting. Absolutely. First, we'll work through the coaches a lot there. I'm going to have a Zoom meeting with coaches because they're going to be the biggest enforcer of what's happening there. They've already gotten a lot of the, some of this information I've sent to them. We'll have a Zoom meeting between us to have that meeting so that they know how to incorporate what it is. And I'll also have either a Zoom meeting or some way I can contact all of the people. Maybe I'll give a sports night where all the parents can join in. They can ask questions, and I can explain there exactly how this, this works and how the expectations for kids when they arrive. You know, when they leave home, they should be checking their temperature. They should be knowing all these things before they even leave their house. Yes?
Beth, and I think you had a question first.
Yeah, I was just wondering about, I think that guidelines about masks hasn't come out yet, whether or not the need to wear them while they're playing. Has that come out yet?
Oh, yeah, we've got rules for that one. They're, for soccer, they have to wear masks the entire time, unless they are 10 feet away from another player, and they're allowed to pull it down just for a breathing break, so they can have it for a few seconds, they can breathe. Then they're, they're expected to put it right back up again. So that's only when you have a lot of distance. Masks, the same rules go for field hockey and golf. They, that's a little bit different on that one. I would have to look up the rules for golf, but they can stay pretty far apart from each other. In cross-country, they have to wear masks at the starting line, and when they're running on the course and there's no one near them, they can pull it down. And then if they go past kids or near the finish line, you gotta pop it right back up again.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Natasha?
Hi, thank you very much also for sharing this, this information. Questions I have are, one, are the parents also going to be able to, or asked to sign like a commitment letter in addition to the students on that, what they're going to be, what that, not only was asked, that they're signing that they're, you know, if they do not comply with this, that basically they will not be allowed to play. I know that some of the other leagues over the summer and the kids, like AVLL, the parents have also been asked to, to sign such documentation to also reinforce that safety component. And I wasn't sure if that would be considered with this as well, in addition to the kids.
Yep, so my plan on that one would be, first, we're going to have as a league, a league-wide, sign, the parents sign, understand the risks that revolve with, you know, COVID that exists. Secondly, I do have a athlete handbook that the kids all have to read through and sign before they can play. And in there, I'm going to add a section for COVID, understanding that they need to be participating and be safe. If they're seen unsafe, probably follow similar rules that we do with if they got caught smoking or drinking. You know, you would have a, either two-week ban or a ban for the season.
And then the other part was because we're going to be in these pods with other, or potentially in these pods with other towns, which it sounds like, are we, is every town going to have the same health protocols? It sounds like that's what was going to happen as far as temperature checking and, so we're not, we're not running on different, I guess, policies on how we're, you know, with the kids during, during the school, I guess. I'm just wondering about, it's hard for tracing, and I know that you, that's why the pods are really there, but if one town, you know, sees a spike, but they're, you know, they're coming to Maynard. And Maynard is such a small town that, a small eight numbers, and all of a sudden we could be in the red, you know? And, and so I just worry about that influence into Maynard because our population is so small that we could spike very easily with just a small number of cases.
Yeah, I agree. Maynard is always tough because we are so small. Doesn't take many cases to put us in the red, that's for sure.
Right.
So they have to, as a league, and we're going against league teams that are in our same pod with us, we, we have the same rules. That's the 14-page document I have now, where we all have to follow these rules. Now, if a kid on their team gets COVID, but then, you know, the town doesn't go red, but they have one or two kids on their team that are COVID, they have to notify us within 24 hours, everyone else in their pod, over there, but then we can make a decision at that point if we even want to go against them. If we're seeing that they have a, they're having an issue, we can just cancel that game.
And how does that work with AMSA? Because AMSA is not just, it's in Marlboro, but there's, the families are from all over as well. So you have like Clinton, are we considering the population of where those kids are coming from if those towns go red? So if Clinton by chance goes red because they are a priority district that, you know, supports AMSA, would we consider not having AMSA because potentially, you know, we could have families included from that town? It's just tricky with charter school.
Yeah, that, that's probably the funniest one of all of them is AMSA because they pull from so many different communities around it. Especially, they're already pulling from some that are yellow between us, Marlboro, Hudson, we're all in that yellow at this, that point. So that is a good question. Usually we just go by town, but that's, I will look more into that because I'm not sure exactly how we would handle an AMSA situation. That's something we can discuss now. It could be simply if the, one of the towns that they pull from is red, particularly Marlboro. That means we would probably, we can cut them off as a school. We can just make that, that choice. Yeah, that's a good question. And, but then they only have a few sports too. They are not going forward with soccer, and they don't have a field hockey team, and they actually share football with us. So the only one they would really come across is golf and cross-country, which are the two lowest-risk sports out of them all.
And I did have one more question, or two more, sorry. So the middle school, the midwatch league, that, they're not, it looks like they, they canceled middle school sports for the fall season, but they do have winters, like basketball, even though it's high-risk. So would that be, is that canceled also? It wasn't listed here? Or is that potentially, because it starts later, a possibility with different guidance to happen?
We're kind of following what MIA has been doing. They're waiting before each season comes up to make a decision if they want to remove it because who knows what that current situation will be? And we're sort of following the same thing. We're waiting to hear what MIA first comes out with for fall, for winter sports. You know, honestly, basketball is going to be a tough one. I, I would, interesting to see how they're going to have that one go forward. I have a feeling that will get pushed back to that fall too also. And, and when that happens, we'll make that decision with the middle school basketball team, you know?
And how does football per se happen in fall two in the winter? I just am wondering, you know, because you said fall two, but you, the timeframe was through, through the winter, right?
Well, it's, yeah, it's late there. What did I put for the dates for fall two? It's February to April, so.
So if there's snow on the ground, I'm guessing that would make football kind of difficult, possibly?
But it's, but it's certainly possible. That's a good thing about football. They can play through, they'll play through rain, they'll play through, you know, snow. I've definitely watched the Patriots games where it's been snowing and they've done it.
Tough, tough group.
Yeah, exactly. So they, but again, they can make that decision while they're going. If it's not, if it's not applicable for them to actually play, if it's dangerous, they, they can cancel that game or, you know, make that decision game time.
Any other questions?
I know Jen, I think Jennifer had her hand raised at one point. I don't know if she had anything to add.
Jen, only piece, I, Brian, you did an amazing presentation, absolutely all the things. I am sitting on the sports medicine committee of the MIA this year. And so exactly the pieces that you described are what's happening, and we'll reevaluate sort of all of these pieces. And in terms of the regional aspects, Desi actually does have a, and I don't know what it is off the top of my head, but Desi does have a way to look at regional school districts of which AMSA would be one, to determine how, which, which town you sort of identify as being your town, if you will. So we can send that out to folks as well, and Brian, I can get that to you, but I very much appreciate the presentation.
Yeah, no problem. And that makes sense, and I would be surprised if it's not Marlboro. I think they have half their kids, half their kids are from that school, from there, so.
Yeah.
All right.
Lydia, can I ask just two more questions?
Oh, sure.
Thank you. So, one thing I was wondering, I just, so albeit it was third graders, but they had summer ball. And just the recognition that the coaches are trying to, like, it's just a lot to ask. So I'm wondering if there are either parameters around or volunteer monitors, people that are able to kind of watch. I mean, I know we're talking like seventh grade and up, and sometimes high school, depending on the sport. So what are your, what are you, what's the thinking on that?
Yeah, certainly you don't want to, it's, you gotta be careful because you don't want to add a lot of people there because that, obviously, there's an added risk to it. They do want us to have a safety captain that's also added to this so that they're, they're, they're in charge of actually watching the safety protocols and make sure they're being followed. So that's something where I can recruit a parent or someone who could be involved to watch over that. So I haven't, I've really just started looking at that now, you know, kind of waiting for a vote for tonight to see if we're going to go forward. And then we start looking at either coaches to see if they can nominate someone who would be a, you know, a parent or someone who can be a good safety captain for them.
I can just tell you, it's just hashtag awkward. Like, it's just, it's not how people, you're, this whole kind of environment and culture and sport, and when you're there and you're on outside and you're together, it's just so odd and feels unnatural. And it's not anyone's fault, but to have to have this distance and they have to remember that at all times and.
Well, it's a social, it's a social engagement, and so it's intended to, you congregate and by nature.
Within the context of this social engagement activity, trying to ensure everyone's staying essentially away from each other while they're near enough each other to play the, the game. So I don't, that's not to say I don't think it should be, it's just, it's just difficult in implementation and, and, yeah, that's all.
I will say, we do have some, I'm really happy to be a, you know, AD in this town because we have great parents. We have great soccer parents, great cross-country parents, and, and I have a feeling that we're going to be able to get this to work right in our town, you know?
Yeah, I agree.
All right.
Great.
Anyone else? All right, I will accept a motion.
What would be the motion? I'll entertain our.
Well, it could either be to approve or to not approve.
So it's the recommendation, do we have the recommend, an actual wording on the recommend, the whole recommendation? We just had the presentation. Because there's different levels of what we could do, right?
So I believe the recommendation was to approve the operation of fall sports that are able to operate on the basis of MIA regulations. Is that correct, Brian?
Yeah.
Okay, what Jen said. I'll make that motion.
You can just say so moved, Mary.
And we're, we're talking about fall sports at this point, right? So we're, we're voting to approve the recommendation for fall sports.
Yes.
Yeah, not winter, not fall two, just right now, and then we'll revisit it when the time comes, okay?
Got it. Okay, I second that motion.
Second? All right, roll call, vote. Mary Brannaly.
We have discussion first.
Oh, sure, yeah. Okay, yep, discussion.
I just want to say that I think what has me say, I mean, there's obvious reasons why these sports are important. It being outdoors, and there's so many, like, precautions in place that I feel like that this is just an important element to be able to offer on a number of levels and appreciate everyone doing their part within that and that there's considerations around. We helped ensure everyone has the buy-in to do that because that's, I think, what's going to make it work, everyone involved in it, being able to be bought into what we need to do to make it work for everyone in consideration that everyone's home environment is different and what it takes for them to decide to let their child do that is going to be different. And just speaking personally, my mom is in our home and could very, very, you know, could catch COVID at any moment. And we had to be like, okay, so how do we weigh that against my son's obsession and need to get out and be involved in this? It's just the kinds of decisions we're having to make every day, both on like the larger level and individually, it's just a lot. So they're, it's complicated, and I just want to recognize that. I know we, in Maynard, we, I, I do feel like we're going to be able to figure that out, and that's why, that's what I wanted to say before I make my vote tonight for everyone's sake.
Actually, I had something else I wanted to add to. I know part of, one of the letters were the questions and answers that we had sent. There was some information about it only having, so like with one bus, we were limiting the, the cost of the transportation piece. And I just wanted to make sure that could be stated again a little bit more because I think that's also, I mean, I just want to be cognizant of our financial situation right now and, and how we can be successful in having sports, but also recognizing we are within a certain limit of what we can do financially and how can we make support, sports successful within those parameters? Is it, is it that one, is it one bus that was going to happen per game? Is that what it would be limited to?
Yeah, it would be one bus per team, so one bus per game. So if it's a JV and a varsity, you technically could have two. We are reducing buses already, just losing that middle school sports. There's, there's a lot of games that they would be going to. And we also pay by the mileage, so having all these games much, much closer also has a benefit because we were driving out to Murdoch, which is about an hour away. Our furthest drive is going to be 20 minutes, so that would be, at least as of now, that I see.
And then I guess my other, and this is not necessarily for Brian, but just for the school committee, if, if we at some point feel that maybe we get feedback, a lot of feedback where safety protocols are not happening at the events, are we able to, or would we revisit this to just say, you know, there's unsafe actions that are just not being, you know, happening, you know? I know that they're going to have a safety captain, but at some point, I would hate for confrontation to break out at an event because someone's being told to put a mask on. We've seen things that are happening in the public and sporting events by nature can be a little, you know, exciting. But I just want to recognize the fact that we're in these emotional times and that ultimately the safety of everyone in, in the sporting events are creating a safety consideration that we, we reserve the right to revisit that at any given point. Would that be an unrealistic thing to say? That's for the school committee. That's not for.
No, I don't think that's unrealistic at all. I think that's our job.
Yeah, and I, and I would say that if there is a way to make sure that, that parents can share, like, as opposed to in the moment, to be able to give feedback if they're seeing something on the, because they're the ones there on the ground, being able to kind of notice some of that if they're attending.
Yeah, I just worry about like that safety person, you know, again, I see things happening in our, not in our community, but in public, and someone's being told to put a mask on, and then someone gets upset about it, and just things, you're, these are kids' events. And I just want to make sure that we all work towards the success of that and remember what we're, the work that's being put into making it successful. Because it's, it's, it's a lot of work, and I hate for it to be, you know, all for naught because of, you know, community lack of cooperation at some point.
I will just, as an input there, say, you have the safety captain, but you're also going to want to have an administrator there if I can help with that. And I'll likely be at a lot of our home games on purpose so I can be kind of helping back up that safety captain.
Wonderful. Thank you.
To that end, Brian, the question that I've got, and it speaks to Natasha, because I'm not as worried about the kids as I, as I am sometimes about the parents who think that they are, they don't have to abide by the same rules. So is it going to be a given that the parents also have to wear masks when they go as spectators?
Yep, there's, there'll be rules all around that, and when I put out the, the set rules for it, we'll have it in there. They have to stay apart from other, it's broken apart. I'm not sure if there's official mask rule, but I'll take a look at that. There might also be the mask rule with it too.
Well, I mean, I think part of the handbook, that, that's going to be where the, the athletes and the parents also sign that, right?
Yep.
Okay, so that, that's something to fall back on, that they have to, I think that in that COVID section, that sounds like a great place to make sure that it's parent buy-in there as well because it's going to be a great thing. It'd be tragic that it can't happen for things that we could always, you know, do better at.
Yeah, we know that's going to be one of our tougher aspects to have in the sports is the, the parent aspect. We know that. It's going to be a lot of parents. There's going to be parents from other teams trying to show up, and it's gonna, you know, that's something we're going to have to try to manage and, you know? I expect that to at least be one of the challenges for sure.
All right, thank you. Glad it's on your radar.
Yep.
And Brian, thank you for taking the lead. This is not an easy time for you to become the athletic director, but we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? I don't see any more hands raised. Wait, was that Jessica, were you about to raise your hand or?
Nope, that was, I get my hair out of my eyes.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second roll call vote. Mary Brannaly.
Absolutely, yes.
Jessica Clark.
Yes.
Beth Lynn Houlihan.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy. Yes. Okay, so fall sports as approved by MIA, a low-risk category are approved for this coming year.
Low and moderate risk.
Low and moderate. All right, thank you, Brian, very, very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okie doke. Now, subcommittee reports, and we don't have to do this in the. Okeydoke. Now, subcommittee reports, and we don't have to do this in the order that it's on the agenda unless someone feels strongly about it.
I gotta go back to the agenda. There we go.
Well, there's policy, we've got a bunch of policies, and then we have budget subcommittee and negotiation subcommittee. And I didn't know if budget and negotiation subcommittee wanted to report quickly before we got into the policy.
I could report a negotiation real quick. It'll be quick.
Yeah, if there are no objections, I'd like to take it out of order. Okey dokey. So who has the budget subcommittee report?
Again, it's, it's pretty straightforward. It was canceled this week because we're still waiting on information from, in terms of the transportation and in terms of the food service. So we're back on, I think it's next Thursday.
Okay. Excellent. And Natasha?
Yep, and, yep, negotiation, just some ongoing conversations. We had executive session today. But the only thing that is new, the MO, which we, Brian shared earlier is, or actually, I don't know if we shared, we circulated the email is that our next meeting will have the MOU for the town and the school department. So that the school will be signing their share and then the board of selectmen will be voting on theirs in October. And this is more about the delineation of the duties, which does have some financial understanding or components that are written into. So I don't want to go too much in deep because it just was shared today, but for food for thought. And then the other pieces is that it sounds like we will be meeting the negotiation. I don't know if we, did we set up a meeting for next, next week yet for negotiations subcommittee? No, I think we need to do that after Brian's having ongoing conversations with, with the UGANS. And so hopefully we might have some draft information next week to get eyes on, and I'll share some notes later on as well.
Alrighty, so with that, we go to policy.
Oh, I did have a, I had a CPAC, we had a CPAC collaboration.
All right, yep.
I didn't know if you want, Jessica, I don't know if you want to share or, or I can.
You can take, go for it.
Okay. I thought it was a very, it was a great meeting. Everyone formally got introduced with, with Jeff. And, you know, he's hiding on the tails of just his one month anniversary and already he's done so much and underway. It was great to have some of the building leadership there as well from Fowler at the high school, which I thought was, you know, really engaging to hear. We do have another meeting scheduled October 10th, no, October 20th. Yeah, and then there, there was some discussion about consolidating some of the subcommittees to make them a little bit more effective where CPAC chair might work on with the safety committee instead of having a separate safety committee with two of it, it's just more effective. The literacy, Mr. Ferranti is going to be working with giving updates on, within the, the collaboration about how that screening and all that's working instead of having a separate, avoiding redundancy and it's just more efficient to work that way. And it just was an overall great meeting. And so I just wanted to applaud the leadership team for really engaging and listening and sharing. It was all around a very successful meeting.
Awesome.
Great to hear.
Are there any other liaison roles, liaison reports? I don't think we got, we didn't have, CPAC, what, Mary?
We had the, the final ad hoc safety meeting this morning. Charles Gabron has been orchestrating incredibly well all summer between parents and teachers and principals about how to make the schools as safe as we possibly can when the staff starts coming in and, and all of that. So it's, yep, so just went through that. Again, very, very successful. Awful lot of hard work by the same people who have been doing all of the other work throughout the summer, so.
Awesome, thank you. Um, all right, now policy, unless there's, I think that's it for liaison roles. I don't think we have any other. Okay, fantastic. So, uh, starting with BE DB dash E, agenda template. This is our third reading. It's up for a vote, although I have received feedback that we might want to take a look at some other school committees' meeting agendas to allow for members' comments. Because subcommittee reports are one things, but there's really no allowance in this report or, sorry, in this format for reporting out of certain events, like if someone goes to graduation or if someone goes to an MEF event or a sesquicentennial event or something. So my, the, sorry, the policy subcommittee had intended those sorts of things to go through the chair and be relayed to the chair to, to present during the chair's report. And I don't know if people want to discuss their feelings about that or opinions.
I can share, I can share what, I know that after our last meeting, we mentioned about like, I noticed that the, the policies on mask, what they showed, some differed a lot after I looked to what actually agendas were for other towns themselves. And I, I did share, I did save a couple of neighboring district agendas in a folder under the policy review for, for reference. Just because I thought it was interesting how broadly different they are. Some had pledge of allegiance. Some of them had a union report, you know, some of them didn't have a chair report. Some had members' comment or they had member forum. And I think feedback I shared with Lydia, some of it had it earlier with, under the chair report. It was chair report and members' reports combined, and it was earlier on in the meeting. And I think from, because I don't think our members' comments is necessarily very long. I think it's more towards the end and people are kind of drawn out. And I don't know if the placement of it might be moved to a better place. But just in quickly looking, I mean, Marlboro, I see how they worded it real quick, sorry.
I've got it.
Yeah, so, and some didn't have it, like Neshoba didn't, but Hudson had a section that said items of interest to the school committee. Lincoln had chairpersons and members' report, but it was at the beginning. Marlboro had members' forum, it was at the end. So I just thought it was, you know, very broad and clearly there, I don't think Maynard is unusual for having a dedicated place for it. But obviously, I just think it's, it's worth preserving a place for it. Considering it doesn't really take up a lot of time typically. And also, some members don't always talk at all.
Talking about our committee?
Well, if we, if we have a separate report out about subcommittees, which it looks like that's what we're evolving to do, then that, that's usually where that kind of report out has happened, right, under members' comments. So if we have a separate dedicated place for subcommittees, and it's really more about the random, again, items of interest to the school committee, which is how Hudson words it on their agenda. I don't know the right wording, but it does feel like it's not an odd thing to have on the agenda. And considering that we, we're a small community and we do have things going on, that we all are engaged in different ways around town. I, I think it's important to, to have. I also didn't know if maybe the pledge of allegiance, I thought that was something I hadn't thought about before, but I know the board of selectmen, when they're onsite, they do it. And is that something the school committee wanted to do at their meetings when we go back to onsite potentially? So I don't know, just some things I thought were interesting based on viewing other formats, but they're all over the place, so they're not. They're, they're different.
Discussion?
Yeah, Needham, Needham has the school committee, they've got the school committee chair and subcommittee updates at the beginning and then they have school committee comments at the end, which is the way that we had done it previously. But the challenge is, again, and I think you said this, Natasha, by the time we get to school committee comments, like anything that we want to celebrate, we've lost most of our audience, so.
Do we, so do we, do we think about doing something maybe like, like what Lincoln has then, we put it at the beginning? Like under chairperson's report and then members' report or?
Well, I, so the things that occurred to me, two things, maybe three. One is even just today, so we were trying to consider, Lydia had said, well, so for today, we don't have the members' comment. If you could funnel, just let me know what you want to say. And even just like an hour before the meeting, there might have been something, like there are things that might come up that you're like, oh, I wish I'd emailed Lydia about that, you know, like something that.
Well, that's something I thought of too, like the effectiveness of, because sometimes like we're reviewing information a little bit, you know, we're getting up to speed sometimes at different times.
Yeah, or, yeah, when I'm kind of wrapping my brain around it and things start to percolate. And then, so, and I don't think that would come up much. I think that for the most part, once it got into the swing and you have that structure, you should, we should be able to just, anything that we'd want to bring up would be something of interest for everyone. And it would be nice to have it all just bulleted and it's already figured out and Lydia just runs through it. And we all know that that's going to be on the, I think that seems like a nice structure so that we feel like we're covering what we want to have covered. And it's done succinctly and efficiently, but covered. And at the same time, in case there is something additional that we feel like we want, that's not anywhere else on the agenda, that we want to make sure that gets mentioned to have just a catchall, was there anything else? And I think it might even come up tonight where that just kind of happened organically anyways, but just trying to still keep us being efficient for the sake of everyone. Because clearly people are going to want to come and, and be here for the meetings. And I like the idea too of like not having it be dragging on to the very end. So those are my thoughts. I have no answers, those are my thoughts.
Okay.
So is anyone open to maybe having something combined or moved up higher?
So I think what, what we need to do is, is either decide to postpone approving this and go back and, and add some more stuff, right? Do some, because I don't, I don't know that we could do it tonight while we're, so we either approve as is or we, we don't approve and put it on hold till next time.
So I have another, just another question. So it's our powerhouse policy people who have been, you look at our, our calendars, like policy meeting, policy meeting, policy meeting. You, did you already discuss some of this already? Because it had come up before. And what was your rest now for deciding at this point that you, that you would still recommend that we move forward as we are?
Basically, it was that, one, again, at the end of the night, we lose most of our viewers and some of us are tired and we just start getting punchy and it takes longer and whatnot.
Yeah, some half the time I'm like, ugh, yeah.
Yeah, the other thing, I mean, just in the interest of time, trying to, we're trying to really remain, maintain, you know, an economy of time. So that would, would lend to it. And also, I think we were, we were trying to consolidate the message as a message from the school committee and not necessarily from individual school committee members. And therefore, if it were, if it was reported through the chair, then it's more of a school committee message than, but there's nothing, there's nothing wrong with it coming from individual members. It's, it's just, we felt it would be more efficient. And not saying that that is the end all be all or the only way to do it. It's, it was just, it was our solution to what we see as, has been a bit of an issue for us historically in terms of length of time.
The members' comments specifically or the meeting times?
Just the meeting time, but, I mean, there, there have been times when in the end, someone says something and then it jogs someone else's memory and they're like, oh, yeah, and I also wanted to thank, or can I do this one more time? Or, oh, I forgot to thank so and so, or I forgot to do this, and it just goes and goes. And then, and then someone else feels guilty. I feel guilty because I don't thank anybody. And then I feel like, oh, I should be thanking someone because everyone else is thanking people and I don't want to look like a jerk. And so, you know, it, it sort of just takes on a life of its own.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're saying like more concise?
Yeah, come up with a structure to just sort of rein it in. Because I also don't want to be put in a position where I'm like, hey, guys, you know, it's nine o'clock and we've been talking about this to death. And yes, we've thanked everyone, can we just go to bed now? You know, I don't want to have to curtail, well, because I, I think that these things are important to express and to let people know. But like, for instance, Mary, Mary asked me, she sent me an email asking me to please acknowledge and thank Justin for all the work that he has done, right? And so, you know, and I don't say that's coming from me. I say it's coming from the school committee. The school committee really appreciates everything that he did, you know? So it's just something to think about. We don't necessarily have to jump right into that format. If people aren't comfortable and they still want to be able to have time for members' comments, we can certainly consider that. I guess, you know, that's, that's why we have this discussion and that's why we have a vote. Yes, Mary?
So, so that we can vote this and not have to go back again? How about if, like, the way that Needham has it, it's, and it would still be toward the end, the way that we've got it all set up. But school, so chair slash member reports slash comments. So, so, and I like the idea of, for the most part, getting all of our comments to Lydia. So again, she can do it, but then if you think of something else or something else comes up, then it would be, the, the member comment piece would just be the extra ones. Like just something that, you know, that just came up recently versus most of them would go to Lydia. Does that sound okay?
So are you saying the subcommittees would submit their updates to me to read out?
No, I'm just, I'm saying we could sort of put them together, that the way Needham has it, it's chair report slash member report slash comments or something like that. So the comments would be just extraneous if there's additional things, but most of the comments would go to you. But, so the chair report and then the member report, and I mean, we can even have them as the two different categories that they are now. The chair's report and then number eight, you know, member report slash comments. So, but the comments would be, because to your point, we can sometimes just go on and on and on and everybody's tired and that's what makes the meeting so long and not as productive.
And I also feel like we've got structures now, like I have a few notes here that I'm like, I can email this later. Because you know, like that we have what we need in place to feel like there's something, just something small even, like you know, there's a lot going on behind the scenes too. And instead of having to bring that up in this meeting per se, we know what it can be, there's structures that are going to be followed through. So the integrity of those structures at this point as well. So that it's not necessarily like, oh, and I meant to bring this up and can I just bring up this thing that I heard the other day from a parent? You know, you can email it and that it's going to be followed through on, which is a big and important thing that I think we've gotten to this year.
Awesome. Okay, so then would eight be subcommittees' reports and comments or members' reports and comments?
I said member report and comments because that is one of them, one of these had it, which is, which is basically the same thing, subcommittee report. But members' report slash comments kind of makes it more generic.
Okay.
Knowing that the members' reports are going to be the subcommittee reports.
Okay, yep.
That would just be my recommendation. I don't know if everybody agrees.
Thoughts?
I think that sounds, I had suggested something similar last, last meeting that we combined like members' subcommittee reports and members' comments.
Yeah, I think, I think you did.
Yeah, so it sounds like that's, yeah.
Okay, but do we want to keep it in the same place where it is right now? Yeah, okay, so I will accept a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept BE DB E, agenda format with the change of item number eight. item number eight being rewarded as Member Reports slash Comments.
Okay, do I have a second?
I will second.
Okay. Uh, roll call, Mary Branley.
Yes.
Jessica Clark.
Yes.
Bethland Houlihan.
Yeah.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy, yay, all right, we finally passed it, three times a charm, nice. And on to.
Thank you all for listening to my boorish comments about Members' comments.
Alrighty.
Several times.
Okay, there we go.
Your examples from other school committees' agendas is very helpful, thank you.
Well, I just want to say that the reason why I did that, because I remember the last meeting, it was said that all of them were the same, so that's why I went to look and, and I think that's when I realized the mask had them the similar, but then the actual agendas, I don't either think they're following their policies per se. That's kind of what I realized.
Very good. Next policy, what do we got?
We got E B C, Emergency Plans, this is our second reading, and I made the correction last time in paragraph three, we wanted to say the superintendent shall develop along with the leadership team, and in consultation with the school nurses, school physicians, athletic coaches, trainers, and the local police, fire, emergency personnel, and Board of Health, an emergency medical response plan for each school in the district, each plan shall include da-da-da-da. So I made that edit, um, so I am going to accept a motion to approve and adopt E B C, Emergency Plans.
I will make a motion to accept and adopt policy E B C, Emergency Plans.
And I will second.
Okay, roll call, Jessica Clark.
Yes.
Mary Branley.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
And Bethland Houlihan.
Yeah.
Lydia Clancy, yes, nice. All right. Next one is new, it's our first reading, and we looked at this for two reasons, even though we are going to be remote, we are hoping that we won't stay remote forever, and if we are going to allow school sports, which we thought would be the case, we would need to have some sort of student conduct on buses, policy, and this was adopted from mask. And if there are no edits to be made, yes, oh, Jessica, are you, you're just.
No, I'm done, yeah.
That's okay. You were like. Are there any comments or?
I just wondered about the vehicle, the inspection periodically, how, how are we confirming that with D, or our contractor? Is there some type of validation where we receive copies of when their buses are inspected that we're using, or do they, do we want to get more granular, and what periodically means? I, I think that's more of a Brian question, or?
I was gonna say, I can't answer that.
What?
I don't know.
Oh, maybe Colleen, Colleen's waving her hand.
So we do have a contract with D bus, and that's, I guarantee it's got to be in the contract, so that would be up to them, and I, it's always been good faith, they have their own rules and laws that they have to follow, and they're in severe violation if they don't follow those, so we have no reason to think they're not doing it.
I think we would defer to the bus company on this, because we wouldn't even, we're not going to check the buses per se, but they would have their policies that would match this.
So I guess, do we, do we want to say, because it is, you said, is it in our contract, or no, it's not in our contract per se?
I haven't read the contract fully lately, but it's something that they are mandated to do regardless, contract or not. I mean, we made some tweaks, we added a line to number four to cover COVID issues, that's a line that you could always choose to remove the wording, but we do leave it up to the bus company to do that.
Okay. Yeah, because we don't own our own, but, well, we do own our own van, and, but this would not apply to that, correct?
Correct. Thoughts?
I mean, it seems straightforward, I, I'm trying to think of anything else that occurs. This came from mask.
Yeah.
And there is an additional one that we're looking at, right, which is behavior, so this is the bus safety program, and there's.
Yeah, yeah, the only thing that, when I saw the periodic, like, you had the sentence above it, it talked about doing drills, it was more like twice a year, and then periodically kind of got really vague there, so I just was unsure about, you know, one's interpretation of periodically for bus inspections, and if it could be something that would say in court, I guess it does say for conformance to state and federal, but I don't know if.
Which one are you looking at?
Am I looking at the wrong one?
No, E E A E, she's looking at the bus safety program, she's not looking.
Number three.
Yeah, we're doing E A E C.
Oh, wait, I thought it was, oh, wait, maybe that's why, all right.
Student conduct on the school buses is, is the first one.
Oh, got it, sorry.
I was looking at the wrong one, too.
Okay, because I'm looking for the word periodically, and I do not see the word periodically anywhere, and I'm like, yeah, so it's.
Okay, just kidding, I'm on the right one now.
There we go. Forward. Is my screen frozen?
Nope.
Nope.
It's Natasha's, Natasha's is frozen, oh, not anymore, okay. So, any comments or additions, subtractions, whatever, edits to E E A E C?
So even though it's our first reading, could we actually vote on this if there's no changes, because it's getting timely, or we got, at least, yeah.
Um, these, the, the policies, these were reviewed, I guess, I'm just thinking about, because they involve like kids and, have the Jeff or other team members looked at these before, just to give feedback on any of them?
On these, no, not on student conduct on buses or any of the transportation stuff.
Does, didn't have something there, like a provision for, oh, that must have been the fourth one.
Yeah, this one didn't really, just talked about just behavior misconduct, and then, you'll be notified the loss of transportation privileges with regulations approved by the school committee.
Right, forward. Are people thinking that we're going to need a second reading, or?
I mean, I always like to try to get, I don't know, more feedback if we can on it, because it does impact a lot more, like, when you talk about kids' behavior, there are other components there, I think sometimes to consider.
Who do you want feedback from?
Well, I was just wondering, Jeff, or the Special Education Team, possibly.
I don't think that would be bad.
And principals, maybe?
Yeah, I mean, that one in particular.
Just that last part, because it seems very, you know, black and white as far as the response, and I, and it could be, that's where we end up, I'd just like to have it vetted by other, you know, a set of eyes before we go in and vote on it, for sure.
Yeah, and buses are kind of a, as was mentioned in Brian's presentation earlier, buses are kind of an important area, and so ensuring that we're clear and kind of what's expected of whom and why, so there are any particular, even if it just ends up being that we want to say like, special considerations for individual, I don't know, I don't, I don't, I don't even want to pretend to come up with a wording right now, but I know that we were considering some of that in relation to mask-wearing, and individual considerations, and that would seem to apply in relation to if you're going to end up being on the bus without a mask for that same reason. For instance.
We'll do that.
Alrighty. So, next one is E E A E.
So now I can go to it?
Now you can talk about periodically.
Okay, periodically.
Number three.
Yeah, yeah, and again, it could be fine, it just, you know, I don't know, when I look at like contracts and stuff, and they get into things like periodically about inspections, it just kind of, I don't know, I feel like it's a little loose, but again, it could be fine, this is the second part, with conformance with state and federal safety regulations.
And I'm sure that's prescribed there, I would imagine, I have.
Right, yeah. Would we, and again, I guess not knowing what their contracts really look at, I didn't know if we could leverage like with their contractual, under also contractual obligations or something like that, if they had some other language built into the contracts about what they do for inspections or whatever, whatever, some regularity.
Thoughts? So I, I get that, except I'm wondering like if we went to a different bus company, or they changed, like, there's a change in the state, like, I just wonder about pulling language that we're then going to have to change in the policy.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I don't want to like outline specific, but like, whatever, if we do go to a different bus company, they're, they might be more stringent in their, like, maybe better than just the, the state protocols, and I would want to fall back on the more, you know, conservative, if that's what we, you know, we want in that contract, and then again, I don't even know if they outline, go into that, that level, but.
Yep, we can look into that. Definitely.
And when is our next time that we'd be looking at this stuff? We have a little while, well, are there going to be children that?
Hopefully.
Okay.
We meet every week, so.
I know, sometimes twice a week, from what I saw.
Got to get it done.
Okay, cool, because I was just wondering about if students that, I don't know if their students are being transported at the start of school, any of those with more intense support needs.
Brian, are there?
Yep, yeah, we have kids that will be taking the bus in the morning, I mean, when school reopens.
Yeah.
Not, not on the sixteenth, though, right? On the sixteenth, the high-risk students are not, they're going to be in the small.
They may be on a bus.
Okay, so, we might have to meet next week if.
Although, none of this is actually like earth-shattering new news.
Okay.
Right.
So there's always policies around student behavior on buses. So this is just updated and making it cleaner, but we expect kids to behave on the bus.
Thank you. Okay, cool.
Right, so like without the policy, it's not chaos, is what you're saying.
I think all four of them will behave just fine.
Like a big party time there.
Do we allow disco balls on the buses?
No. Those are different buses, Bethland.
Sorry, sorry, go ahead, carry on.
All right, um, so we will set that one aside. Yes, now.
Yes.
Third one, E E A G, is student transportation in private vehicles, and we felt this was important, because if we are only doing one bus per team, per game, if we happen to have, I can't remember how many students we can allow on a bus, I think it's 24, but if.
Twenty-four, yeah, twenty-five, I think.
Twenty-five, but you have to put into account.
Twenty-five, but I figure the coach might be riding with them, so, you know, anyway. So student transportation private vehicles, now we have already a student travel in private vehicle form that people fill out and file and all of that, but this is a policy that would then refer you to that form, and I think it, it just makes us more accountable, and, and making sure that we, make sure that parents and students understand what the, the, their responsibilities and liabilities are in terms of having the kids ride with friends. Or even driving themselves, I guess. So, does anyone have anything, any comments or consideration for this?
So this goes, we have the current student travel in private vehicles that was in our school committee folder, right, so this.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, anything?
I guess the thing that occurred to me, and this may be something you can tell me that I've heard, so number two is the owner of the vehicle being used in transporting students must file evidence of personal liability insurance, so. That's, ends up being, uh, like, their first thing that occurred to me was, so, if you're a parent or guardian driving your kid for a school event, activity, I just, it just didn't, it just didn't click for me, because that was, that would end up being like someone who's a school representative, right, of some sort in that scenario?
Are you thinking in terms of a parent driving their own child? Because this wouldn't apply, it's just if they bring other kids that are not, you know, so their own kid plus maybe a couple of others, so it's that, you know, outside your own family.
Okay, that was not clear to me.
Yeah, yeah.
So I don't know if, because I would think if I want to drive my, I know this sounds silly, but just reading it literally, I was like, oh, so if I want to drive my kid for an actual school event, I have to prove that I have liability insurance? Which is stupid, so if I wanted to drive several other people's kids? Like to a sporting event, so say, instead of taking the bus.
But it's not just people transporting other people's kids, it could be students riding with students who have.
Right. So that's, I guess that's, so this is meant to cover if there's more than just your own immediate family in a, in a vehicle going to a school event, for instance, a sporting event, that you're traveling, you're bringing athletes to.
Right.
This, this permission that we've used in the past has been used mostly with Great East, when the father or high school students go off to, I think it's Springfield, where one parent brings her, their own child and maybe a few others in the car.
Okay, got it, yeah.
Used it mostly.
Yeah.
So we could just put the owner of the vehicle being used in transporting students other than immediate family members?
I mean, it does, I did read it and think.
It's okay.
It might be, I'm sorry.
It's fine, yeah.
I feel like I have a literal brain sometimes, but. Yeah, if you did that, that would, that would immediately be like, oh, okay, cool, I get it, so if I bring any other child, then I have to do this too, like, it would clear that up for me immediately, just reading that particular policy.
And even if there's one student that's bringing the, you know, two siblings happen to be on the same team, they're okay with it, but the minute that they bring somebody else that's outside the family, then they have to do this, so no, I think it's a good clarification.
Okay, so the owner of the vehicle being used in transporting students other than immediate family members.
Right. No.
Thank you. Thank you. And I'm also relieved that I wouldn't have to fill in a form.
Okay, anything else? Natasha. Oh. I can't hear you. You muted.
Oh, we gotta get her back.
Or your microphone died.
Oh, still muted. Oh, there you go.
There we go. My kids were trying to go to sleep and I, I needed to save the world from hearing all that, so, um, anyway, um, I did have a question about, because I was reading it and I, I think Bethland kind of touched on it when, so this is intended not for staff who are bringing in their own car, correct? Because I, I, it didn't really, it wasn't clear to me that it could potentially apply to staff?
Well, except for, I don't know, do we allow that kind of contact between staff and students?
Well, that's why I wonder, if I was looking at it through that lens, it seemed like it could be applicable where, um, a teacher or a coach or a band leader is driving and it just kind of takes the direction of the conversation a little bit different.
It does say teachers may transport students in private automobiles during the workday if they have the power of approval.
Right, so, so, I guess, I don't know, um.
So, if we reference on EEAG, the backup sheet, which is student travel in private vehicles.
Yeah, but we, this, we're gonna have to revisit anyway, because there's a lot of, there, there is some conflicting information on this.
Which one is that?
Well, on this, it says it must be insured, um, in the amount of a hundred thousand to three hundred thousand or more. And on the one the school currently uses, um, the owner has to have insurance of at least two hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred thousand, uh, even if the driver is other than the owner. So this is, this is a more stringent policy. My computer's about to die, I gotta grab my cord. Talk amongst yourselves.
Okay, so we're saying, because this policy we're looking to adopt, um, just talks about transporting the students, um, in private vehicles, but doesn't really differentiate, um, this is the, if it's parents, number three says, parents, guardians of the students to be transported will be fully informed. But this does allow for, for staff potentially with the superintendent approval.
That's what I thought was happening here. I thought it included staff too, like anyone that might transport students.
Yeah, I think when you start talking about parents, I got, I got kind of thrown off, like, oh, wait, is this for parents, you know, getting, who need to get superintendent approval, but I guess, like, for other parents of other kids, you know, like, hey, I'm, like, we just had Brian, the athletic director, talking about, you know, safety captain, you know? If there's a safety captain who is, you know, bringing kids or whatever, because we only have one bus, would this apply in that circumstance? And it sounds like it potentially would, right? Even though they're not a staff employee, but they would need to, like, do we need to think of, if it could be a parent, does it, do we need to think about, like, quarry training, um, you know, screening? Or anything like that?
To carpool?
Like, if you're bringing, like, for a school-sponsored event, like, if you're bringing, I don't know, extra students in your car.
Within the school, right? So it's not on the, right, school grounds.
Yeah, like, I feel like as a parent, like, I would never go, be like, can I have a form to pick up and drop off my kids from the dan, their friends from a dance, like, or, or even a sporting event? Like, if we're all going to the soccer game, I'm not gonna go sign a form to drive kids to carpool with their friends and have one parent drop off, the other pick up. I, I honestly thought this is more geared towards staff or coaches than it is parents.
Okay.
Right, like, is, is, are we trying to say that we need parents to have this signed in order to carpool?
Well, I think it's more because Brian was talking about how he might encourage parents because we've just got the one bus, and to be honest, there might be parents, well, although they'd just be taking their own kids, as you, but, um, he did mention that they were gonna try, they were gonna stick to one bus, so, you know, for each sport. So they might ask parents to, to take their own kid and maybe somebody else. So I think, this looks like, Lydia, I think we need to go back and do some more work on that.
Brian has his hand up.
Ryan?
Want to say something?
We're kind of stuck on this parent thing. I think the part that talks about parents down here is really, and principals do this, when a staff member, if for some reason, if it's a sporting event, or a band event, if they're gonna put a student in a car other than the school bus, the part that's talking about parents is making sure that before they do that, they're gonna make a phone call to the parents of the student who will be getting in the car so that those parents can give permission.
Right, and not sign this formal.
No, that's all this says, is that there's gonna be a conversation with the parent.
Perfect.
Because we wouldn't want to put your kid in somebody else's car without informing you or asking your permission, that's all.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but the, still number two says the owner of the vehicle being used to transporting students. So that's where clarification would be good, if it's meant to be that, that, that's only during the school day, if it's only, um, school staff and related.
All right, so we can, we can revisit that and, um, I mean, there, there is more descriptive language in the back, back page, so we can try to incorporate more of that into, um.
I don't think it'll take a lot, just a tiny bit of clarification, yeah.
Well, I think, I think I got lost a little bit more in the intent, because then we're talking about, you know, like, the, what we're expecting to use it from potentially in the fall and then that's more like snapping, but then the parent piece, yeah, we did get, we did get hung up, Brian, on the parent piece, we totally did.
Got hung up.
All right.
Okay, next.
So then, that leaves us with JLCC, communicable diseases.
I had one feedback, hold on, let me pull up, what did I do, what did I do with it? It was more of a slight language tweaking, um, hold on, let me see where it. In what section? In paragraph five. If there, it talks about, um, as a handicapped child and it was suggested that, just that terminology is a little outdated, um, to, to instead put in as a person or student with a disability.
Okay. Or qualifies for disability services?
I guess just the handicap piece, I mean, I know they even changed the IDA just because of that, the, the handicap, you know, and even is just, you know, not really typically used often, although spots are called handicap spots, but anyway, um, that was just some feedback CPAC had when they reviewed it.
Okay.
So Natasha, if you said, in the event a student with a life-threatening communicable disease qualifies for disability services under state and federal law, so you kind of.
Yeah, it sounds like, as a, yeah, as a student with a disability, so same thing, I don't know if it qualifies for services, yeah, I mean.
With a disability, or, yeah.
Right. Yeah.
For disability services.
Okay. And they, they both work well.
Yeah.
Okay, qualifies for disability services under state and, okay. All right.
One further thing for us to, maybe for you and myself, Lydia, to, on paragraph four, um, the educational placement of a student who is then diagnosed, blah, blah, it says, and accompanying administrative procedures. We don't know what those are, so we need to maybe look into that a little bit.
Look into that, yep.
So that we know what we're signing up for.
Correct, yep. We don't have a cross-reference on the back, so.
Yeah, I noticed that.
Okay.
Whatever, yeah.
Just got it out of it. All right. Put that on a side. Now, we have three that, um, need to be, as we go through, um, the policies, we're finding policies that were adopted, you know, at, um, along with all of the others and, uh, on January 30th, um, and we found some that are unnecessary. And those three are, um, EEAEA, bus driver examination and training, and EEAEA dash one, drug and alcohol testing for school bus and commercial vehicle drivers. Because we do not employ our own bus drivers, um, we do not give examinations or do alcohol and drug testing. That's up to the contractor to do. So I recommend that we vote to, um, remove these policies from our catalog.
So we, I guess it's probably in our contract though, right? That's, again, with the transportation company, right? That they are, are those, those elements that they're doing all the, again, I don't have their contract to see, but I'm just gonna just say that is part of the contract, that those safety elements are.
I would hope so, if we did our due diligence, which I am pretty sure we have.
Yeah, so it's just not like we're throwing out safety considerations, it's that they're being counted for in another place.
Yeah, I, I can't imagine that bus drivers of, of school-aged children, you know, wouldn't have to have those parameters in place as a bus company, yeah, yeah.
Well, I know when you deal with independent contractors, that's usually where the, all those pieces come through, is on the contract aspect.
Maybe in the eighties, you know, it might have been the case.
Back when they allowed the disco ball on the bus.
Yeah, allowed, you know, all sorts of inappropriate stuff to put her, um, yeah, so, um, do, can I, do we need to vote on this? I don't know if we need.
Make a motion, yeah, to vote to.
What about, could we, is there another one that we wanted to look at, get ready to, without objection, do them all together?
Sure. JCA, assignment of students to schools. Well, since we don't have multiple primary schools and multiple middle schools and elementary schools and high schools, we don't have to assign students to schools. This would be in the event that, say, we had five different primary schools and we had to choose which kids went to which school. That's not the case here, so we do not need JCA, so.
So a question that I had, doesn't it also pertain to, like, say for instance, that a family were to move out of Maynard to Stowe and, you know, mid-year and their child wanted to continue in Maynard? Doesn't it also speak to that, number three, the way that I read it?
I, I, that I'm not sure about, um, maybe we need to ask someone who knows about choicing in and.
I, I read that as pertaining to, like, if you move, like, like Lexington, for example, they district you based on your address?
Right. Yeah.
How I read that, not as moving out of.
If you move from neighborhood to neighborhood.
That was initially how I read it, like, I was thinking of Acton because they've got the different schools, but then when I read it again, I was like, hmm, because we do have kids that have moved to a different community, but they want to continue going to school in Maynard, especially at the high school.
Then they become kids who choice in?
Okay.
And they bond or something.
Oh, Brian, Brian, Brian wants, yeah.
No, you, you said it. No, you said it before, as my hand went up, right? If somebody moves out of town and we have open seats, they can choice in.
Okay, so does it need to, is that what this says or is that not necessary here?
No.
No, that's a separate issue.
That's separate.
We have separate policies, I think we adopted last year about choicing, right? And so, I wonder if it's helpful just to make sure that that, what you're talking about, Mary is.
JICBB, but I'm not positive.
Yeah.
Really? You really know it off the top of your head?
Nerd.
All right, good.
Wrong, I could be totally wrong, but.
That's true, but you said it with authority. Well, I would make a motion, um, to discontinue EEAEA, EEAEA dash one, and JCA because they are moot and not relevant.
All right, second.
Okay, roll call. Mary Branley.
Yes.
Uh, Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Bethland Houlihan.
Yeah.
Jessica Clark.
Can you hear me?
Oh, now I do.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Lydia Clancy, yes, okay, excellent. And, that's it for policy. So, we are now going to, um, enter executive session under MGL, Mass General Law, chapter 30A, and then there's a funny squiggle thing and I don't know what that stands for, 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with unions for reopening the school year remotely. Since an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining of the public body and the chair so declares, and I so declare, the subcommittee will not reconvene in open session. And we will adjourn via roll call to, um, executive session. Mary Branley.
Yes.
Uh, Jessica Clark.
Yes.
Uh, Bethland Houlihan.
Yeah.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy, yes. All right, thank you, everyone.